So the question was posed, who determined the one mile radius? And why are people caught?
Yeah, you got to go outside with one mile radius. Well, first of all, tires in between, I go out with one mile radius. Then we have to go to the police, there's a difference between everybody.
Okay, so Jay, guys, just say it again. Sorry. Mark.
Jay, guys, this is a one mile radius.
No, Jay, there. Mark, okay, what do you think?
Yeah.
Alright, the one mile radius was determined using the Department of Transportation Emergency Response Code. When we were got the chemical that we believe was the most hazardous being the volatile rod on that train. We researched in the ERT, this is an expanded practice across the country, to determine an evacuation zone. That evacuation zone has been determined by the Department of Transportation and other subject data experts, based on previous incidents. So that is why we went with these one mile radius evacuation zones, based on that data that we use, provided to us. Hold on, this is a two-part question. So let's get the second part. Is everybody satisfied with my answer?
Yes.
Oh.
No, I'm not. Listen, I can't help it, that's what we have to move on. That's what we have to move on.
Listen to this shit, man. Listen to this, listen, this is a bunch of crap. This is a joke. This is nothing but a joke.
Alright, sorry, oh, hey, sorry. So, when did you get removed from your house?
About four or three times.
Okay. Now, the reason for that, sir, is, first of all, the one mile radius that we established Friday night was one mile for all East Palace School residents and in Beaver County, we worked with them. What we had to do in that nation, which we had to do.
That's a lie.
Just to touch base on that right there.
You don't have to do it.
There was two options. It was either we blow it up, or it blows up itself. There wasn't a clerk, so no matter, all the chemists were here and all this, it was doing something called polarization, and I'm sure that's not the actual word, I'm sorry. polarization, so it was turning into a slime, it was building heat, or in layman's terms, is how they explained it to me. It was gonna blow up. We controlled it, yes, either way, that was one in the atmosphere, it wasn't being done too far. That was our only option. It wasn't just, the fire chief made the final decision, I stand behind you 100%, I was beside the man the entire time. That is what had to be done. We had every expert we could, we had the state, we had the government, the government that came in, who tried to help us. Uh, we had them. But we had to do it, it was either it blow up, or we controlled it. That was the safest thing for this town and our residents. Was there a good decision? It had to be, it was a decision that had to be made, it was a less off to me. So getting back to the first question. I've been in contact with Alan Shaw, the CEO. I'm not, this isn't about me, this isn't about you. This is, he guaranteed me, anybody living in the 44413 area code will now receive a thousand dollar check.
Oh, mega bad.
SPO.
Well, gee, I was gonna ask you something.
This is just because they sent everybody out of town, okay? This isn't, this isn't the final thing, this isn't what you're gonna get out of this. It's because, this is, the people that are in the zone are getting a thousand dollar check. It's not like the village is settling. You're from Beaver County, I should, that, he, I told him he's got work with those officials too. What's your question, sir? I don't know, your guess is as good as mine. Yesterday was the first time I heard anything from the White House. Alright, hey. Alright, if we get somebody from, alright, Ohio EPA. Oh, I need somebody from the EPA. Ohio EPA. Uh, can we watch, can we watch a person outside?
Yes. So, today, various data posted on Ohio EPA's website. We have test results back. We have county health test results back. We have found no evidence of contaminants in the water. That's what they have to say. And the data and tests are all being published.
Who's testing, who's testing the water?
And the data and how is being published, so it's out there on the website.
Yes, sir. Alright. I'm very with you. Yes, sir.
How long is the EPA going to be testing the water?
So your question, sir, was, how long is the EPA gonna be on site testing the water? Water so long. Alright, I need a representative from the United States EPA and the Ohio EPA. Now, this is Director Anne Vogel, she's the head of the Ohio EPA. So I'm gonna take her for her word when she says this.
Thank you, dear. There will be, I think, so as referenced in the governor's press conference yesterday, there are two, for the emergency phase, getting all the product off the ground, getting the soil removed, getting the product removed. The remediation phase comes next. The remediation phase will take as long as it takes, there's a remediation plan we're working through right now, with the US EPA and the Ohio EPA, we'll be here as long as it takes, remove all the contamination.
I could just confirm what the director said, that we're working here in tandem, we're taking the final cleanup, so we'll test water and the soil and the air until our remediation is complete.
They're taking monitors around, like you have one right at the end of the street, and had a bad, some people taking it down. That's an air test, right there. They might use soil or water, but if they're taking down the air test, he has to call for you. Why are they taking them down right now? And why are we taking them down? They said they're taking them down.
How long are we testing the moats? You mean after the initial test, or keep testing? So the question was posed, is it just a one-time reading, or are they gonna keep reading of the moats if you feel unsafe?
My understanding is, is if you still want your home screened, you call the line, and we'll send a team to do additional screening. I mean, I think they're still scheduling for your home screen.
Yeah, we're ready for one. So, we will, we will hold them accountable for as long as we have to. If they, they decide that they're gonna leave, I have Congressman Johnson here, J.D. Vance is coming, Senator J.D. Vance is coming tomorrow, and I will let the senator tell you what he's gonna do if this continues happening.
Well, I'm not a senator, I'm a congressman, I work for a living, so. Look, we're not gonna, we're not gonna let them stop the testing until you're satisfied. That's when the testing stops. It's my job to hold them accountable, and you can better believe that I will do that.
Whose idea was to store toxic waste in the park?
Are you from town, sir? Are you from town? Are you from town? Because I don't care about your eating, I care about our residents. So is the question even at home, is the question, where?
This could have happened to thousands of other communities, just like ours. We are not a poor, unclassy community. We are a community that a disaster happened to, that we didn't know how to fix.
The mayor's getting pissed.
And, we're just trying to figure it out. So when you're recording, please do not report that we're some poor community that, you know, owes us, we just want payouts, that's not what we're trying to figure out. We just want answers.
Mayor?
Question is, I specifically didn't wish to add, whether the pH change in the water, or was there a chemical that killed the fish? Because those of us on the water, our houses less than 2,000 feet from that stream, would you like to know specifically what the chemical caused the death of fish? And, do we have to worry about our aquifers? And where are those tapping into? Please to get geology involved, to further, uh, help us understand this. All we want is access to the information.
The question is, it was, the question was about the aquifers. What was the chemical, could the chemical make it into the aquifers? What actually killed the fish? Okay, got it? Okay, sorry.
Good evening, everybody, Kirk Corr with the Ohio EPA's Emergency Response. Thank you for coming out, so we can hopefully provide answers to your questions. Um, chemicals that killed the fish, and associated with the rattle. The main, uh, chemical of concern probably at that time was the butanol acrylate, which we did know if a car 30,000 gallons broke open, did hit the ditches at Sulfur Run in less than, further downstream. Butanol acrylate is lethal, toxic to aquatic life. It's listed on, uh, the information about that chemical. Uh, but again, different phase suggests lethal to fish, not lethal to humans. That's their environment that they took, the sludge that initially contaminated, hasn't moved down that waterway. Since then, it is today, we're noticing that those waterways that were impacted are being repopulated by the schools of fish. They are moving back. The effects of it, of course, acute, the long term, we're moving to, it's restoring, with the augmentation of the treatment we're doing, the containment, the cleanup measures, again, we're seeing the benefits. The aquifer, again, you have your well field for the city, there's another source water protection area for state tavern that we're aware of. Uh, testing today has shown that the city's well field is non-detect for any of the contaminants of concern, so that public drinking water is available. Part of the emergency response phase, again, vinyl chloride and some of these other contaminants that will release, are primary concern for the agencies, everyone, health departments, everyone involved. So concurrent with the removals that are going on continuously, removing these source areas. Uh, Norfolk Southern, the plan, the work plans are out there, public, samples are already being conducted along the centerline of the tracks on both sides, to get preliminary information on, you know, what's down below the levels of the dig. Uh, the centerline estimation is digging down the clean dirt, where we don't see any type of saturation of the chemicals that were up on top. That information we fed into the system is part of the remediation phase. Would groundwater water wells be required to be put in there? Probably, to make sure, you know, you don't have Kirk Corr just telling you it's good to go, you will have hard, actual data to bank or to build out.
Hey, you can see that dude standing over there, in the green coat and the hat, look at me, that's the dude that flew that drone out there, and I told him my mind. As you can see, he's like continuing to stare at me.
So the question is, what is the chemical that is in the river? Flowing down Leslie Grum and, uh, Sulfur, Sulfur Run and Leslie, Leslie Grum. Yeah, what is the chemical that's in the river, not made in this river?
Again, the acrylates are present in the water samples we're getting. Um, there are vinyl chloride, so the latest data that we have up through, okay, since the 15th, that 12 does not show like the vinyl chloride. There are others traced materials, uh, consistent with combustive high products and all that, but the primary driver was the butanol acrylate, and the other.
It's toxic, man, it's toxic. I won't tell you the truth.
Water samples are consistent with, you know, our surface water quality, the 260, the 270 testers, that information is available, public, we have it.
Listen, we, everybody's frustrated, I understand this. We're trying to get some answers from people that want answers. Yes, sir. Alright, I'll be back with you in one second. Can you come back with me?
My question is, um, most of us are concerned about our health, and it won't be, that's what all this is about. Well, I feel like you're dropping the ball on the immediate health issues that have already become apparent in some people in town. And I'll give an example, my grandson, who's 11, has multiple rashes, has extremities. Uh, I've read online, a lot of people have headaches, and, you know, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. We went to Akron Children's Hospital with my grandson, and were told that they do not have anything set up, a protocol yet, for, uh, testing for the cause of these symptoms. They're treating the symptoms, but they don't know what's really causing it. Well, if you don't know what's causing it, the symptoms could persist. So my question is, what is being done in our community now to address the issues that maybe these hospitals, which is still new to them, have not been able to come up with, uh, way of testing for chemical toxicity, which may be causing some of these symptoms?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your question. Uh, Wes Vines, Plumlee County Health Commissioner, so, uh, yeah, I hear your, your question. And, uh, as we sit at the table here tonight, we've had a fair number of these sorts of questions, so I'm gonna try to address many of these concerns all, all at one time. Um, the general, um, approach that we should have towards our health is that we've got health conditions right now that are what we would call acute, so you've got rashes, you've got uh, these other conditions that maybe need immediate healthcare, uh, to, to address those. We encourage you to seek out your physician, uh, talk to your primary care provider for any of your health concerns that you've got an immediate, uh, conditions for. Um, fortunately, at this point, I don't have Dr. Vanderhoff, uh, he will be here, so as far as the long-term monitoring, uh, I expect that he might speak to that upon his arrival, but we have provided, uh, information to our local, uh, healthcare providers, uh, based on what we have now, and and the information that we can tell them is, treat the symptoms as represented, as different people are gonna be impacted in different ways in many health situations. So, first off, see your primary care provider if you have a medical condition. Uh, and if you have additional healthcare concerns, uh, then also you need to have a conversation, because uh, different people have different healthcare, uh, limitations and, and concerns related to their existing conditions. So that's very important. Uh, and the long-term evaluation, I think, uh, you know, we're continuing to have those conversations, uh, about how and, and what that long-term, uh, projection looks like, but I think I'll, I'll leave that, if I could, Trent, uh, to Dr. Vanderhoff, and ask him to speak to that briefly when he arrives.
The question is raised, why are people getting sick if there's nothing in the air or the water?
And the animals.
And the animals.
Because they're afraid to answer questions.
Norfolk Southern wasn't invited. But, here we are. Norfolk Southern wasn't invited. They were the ones that were pro this table thing, when I was against it and wanted to have it in the auditorium. Okay? We invited them many times, they were at all the meetings. Then the day I get a phone call, that they didn't feel safe. I understand, sir, I'm just as frustrated as you, I'm just as frustrated as you guys. Listen, listen, this can't, I understand everybody, I'm just as frustrated. I live in a community just like you, I'm trying to get answers, I literally can't force them to be here. You can see how much.
Hey, if you, if, listen, listen, if you've got a question, if you have a que, if you have a question for Norfolk Southern, they are not here tonight. My table is right down here, you come and get one of my cards, and then I will get your question, we will respond to you, I will ask that question on your behalf. You will not go without getting your question answered sometime.
Wes, can you, can you find out what he's gonna get? He's coming here tonight. Soon as he.
Okay, look, I think that is a, that is a legitimate question. That is a legitimate question. Now, I'm just gonna ask from a common sense, answer from a common sense perspective. I'm not a doctor, okay? And I'm not a chemist. And so, I can't tell, just by hearing the symptom, or looking at someone, what's causing that ailment. Here's what I would recommend to everybody. If you've got ailments and conditions that you did not have before February 3rd, go to your doctor, get that documented, keep that health record, and then when this, when this process settles down, come back to me, if you're not getting any help from anybody else, and we will elevate that issue for you, to try and find an answer for you. I can't tell you right here tonight, which of those chemicals might cause which problems. I can't tell you that, I just, I just simply don't know. The EPA, both state and federal, have run it. And when you look at the hierarchy in our country, I mean, they're the ones that are responsible for enforcement of the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act. Those are, those are massive regulations that have massive amounts of testing and, and science behind how they go about determining the toxicity of air and water. If they're, if they can't find the answer, and, and, and what's in the air or the water, where do we go from there? Hold on, but what they're telling us, folks, is that based on their testing, that there's nothing there that could contaminate a human being. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna find things down the road, I'm not telling you your question's not off-base. That's why I said, go to your doctor, get that medical record. Let's let science tell us what that was, and science can do that. And if you don't get the answers that you need, you come to my office, you get my card, I will ask that question on your behalf, we'll do a constituent services process, and we'll get to the medical community to find the answer that you need. Is that okay? Okay. Okay.